And we're moving on to our business items. The first is item 7A, Adoption of a Resolution Approving a Contract with RH2 Engineers, Inc., for the Marina Pump Station Rebuild Project and Documenting Procurement Procedures. It says, Mr. Dorsey, I see Mike Pleasance over there, so we'll call on Mike Pleasance tonight.
Thank you. On December 15th, December 22nd, and December 29th, 2017, the city's Public Works Department published a request for qualifications for the Marina Pump Station Rebuild Project. By the January 12th, 2018 deadline, five statements of qualifications were received. On February 14th, 2018, upon the scoring and ranking of the SOQs received, and upon interviewing the top two qualified firms, the city selected RH2 Engineering, Inc. for the project. Public Works staff then met with RH2 Engineering to discuss, clarify, and develop the project understanding. On July 17th, 2018, the city received a fine scope of work, budget, and project timeline for the 30% design and permit coordination phase of the project in an amount not to exceed $250,000. The City of Port Orchard has been awarded a $4.1 million loan from the Department of Ecology, 2019 Water Quality Combined Financial Assistance Program. Once the funding has been secured, the 2017-2018 budget amendment will be required. Staff recommends adoption of Resolution Number 034-18, thereby approving contract number C054-18 with RH2 Engineering for the Marina Pump Station Rebuild Project, 30% design and permit coordination, in an amount not to exceed $250,000, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
Councilmember Lucrelli?
With the understanding that contract execution will not occur until the funding has been secured, I move to adopt Resolution Number 034-18, thereby approving contract number C054-18 with RH2 Engineering, Inc., for the Marina Pump Station Rebuild Project, 30% design and permit coordination, in an amount not to exceed $250,000, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions about this project? We estimate it to about $5 million. We've got a loan in the process that we've been awarded by the state that will pay for this, and hopefully it'll be enough to complete the project. And that was something that was discussed at the Finance Committee meeting today, the, our ability, when we get firmer numbers, to go back to the state potentially to increase that loan amount if need be. So, Councilmember Deener?
So, this staff report contemplates right-of-way abandonment or vacation, some, maybe some alternate locations. I'm just curious what that looks like. You know, do you have something in mind in terms of alternate locations?
It's really, the, I think that the observation deck potentially goes away because of ADA compliance.
Okay.
It will be probably some sort of a picnic area. That's the thing, Thomas, you can cut me off at any moment. You think I deviate from what you and I've discussed. The footprint is realistically the DNR leased land. That's the parking lot on the waterfront that we're, is the area we want to try to stay within. There's been some talk of, in, within the street, because it's going to be very expensive to dig down because of the water table, that we will oversize pipes, and some of our storage capacity will come in large pipes as it enters the lift station. But those have just been preliminary conversations to this point. That's what this 30% design is about, is to give us alternatives so that we can make, you know, educated decisions, you know, as that design comes forward to what it really does look like.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, it's going to be, certainly there are engineers that can do that, but that's going to be a challenge because that's where the force main originates, is from that pump station out to Retsal to the...
Yeah. That, that point probably doesn't change. It's the stuff coming into it.
Yeah, since you move that thing around, you've always got to connect into that pipe somewhere along the line, so.
Correct. Yes.
Just Mr. Hunter went to add anything?
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Hunter, or have I captured it sufficiently?
I think you did a great job. Unless you want me to talk more.
Well, if there's other questions that I haven't been able to, that you have, I, Mr. Chang?
Just for, I'm not going to say Devil's Avenue, but have we considered contemplating making that observation deck ADA compliant? Could you have a ramp that goes around the whole thing, or?
It would just, the project's already in the $5 million range, and it's, we looked at what Gig Harbor, Gig Harbor just did one of these with an observation deck on it, and it involves an elevator and the maintenance of that elevator. So, we're not sure that we need that elevation for this. If, if we end up with a building that does, that's a possibility, but it's, we're not convinced, I mean, it's pumps and there's some controls, there's a control building. I think we want to end up with a nicer public restroom on the waterfront as part of this, but the design will drive that. And ultimately, what we can afford to do will drive it. Other questions?
I would just add that Noah gave us a little more detailed about the funding opportunities on this, and we do have a loan that needs to be executed right now, but he did, as the mayor alluded to, once we get 100% design and have a more detailed scope of cost, that we can increase that line of credit. I'm assuming the terms would still be the same, 20 years and about the same interest rate?
Yeah, I think that's a fair assumption. And the, the other important element of that discussion with the state was that, of course, it's all subject to state funds being available. And so, he said, you know, sooner we know, the better off and safer you'll be. But he said, from the way they manage the program, there's lots of projects that get allocated funds that don't get to actually spend them. So then those funds come back into the state, and they reallocate those out to the projects. So, he did not see that being a big concern.
Another thing to consider, too, is a piece of this will be paid for with growth, but we are replacing existing infrastructure. Well, it would be nice, there's many things that would be nice to have, but we've got to remember our sewer rates are paying for this. So, we need to be, you know, fiscally responsible with, with those, to the rate payers, and, and build what, for sure what the necessity is. And there's some things like, you know, a public restroom and some, and, you know, and making the building and structures aesthetically pleasing, you know, on our waterfront. So, I think those are important features. And, you know, as we get the costs, we'll be able to outline what, you know, here's the amenities list, and, and where do we draw the line? What can we afford? Other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second on the table for the adoption of Resolution, of a Resolution Approving a Contract with RH2 Engineering, Inc., for the Marina Pump Station Rebuild Project and Documenting Procurement Procedures. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to 7B, Adoption of a Resolution Supporting the TIB 2018 Urban Arterial Program Funding Application for the, for the Southwest Old Clifton-Anderson Hill Road Intersection Project. Mr. Anderson, Mr., oh my goodness, Pleasance.
Thank you again for everyone here. I handed out a single sheet of paper here before the meeting, and this is replacement just for that cover sheet of the staff report. The only additions are for the final sentence and the fiscal impact. For the 2018 Urban Arterial Program Funding Application for the Southwest Old Clifton Road- Anderson Hill Road Southwest Intersection Project, the Transportation Improvement Board requires a funding commitment letter from all funding partners. Therefore, by the August 17th, 2018 deadline, the City of Port Orchard Public Works Department will be submitting a 2018 UAP Funding Application Request in the amount of $1.625 million to the TIB for the Southwest Old Clifton Road-Anderson Hill Road Southwest Intersection Project for the construction and construction support phases of the project. If successful, the TIB funding will be available to commence with the construction of the Southwest Old Clifton Road-Anderson Hill Road Southwest Intersection Project in 2019. Given that the TIB funding ration is maximized at 85%, and the City of Port Orchard has already provided $2,000, $255,840 towards the project during the prior design and right-of-way phases, an additional $500,000 minimum will be, will need to be allocated with the 2019-2020 biennial budget if the TIB funding application is successful. See Exhibit A attached. The additional funding will be provided by the Bayside Traffic Mitigation Fees of approximately $315,000 and the McCormick Traffic Impact Fees. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 032-18, thereby supporting the 2018 Urban Arterial Program Funding Application for the Southwest Old Clifton Road-Anderson Hill Road Southwest Intersection Project as a requirement to obtain grant funding for a fully funded project phase.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 032-18, thereby supporting the 2018 Urban Arterial Program Funding Application for the Southwest Old Clifton Road-Anderson Hill Road Southwest Intersection Project as a requirement to obtain grant funding for a fully funded project phase.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Ashby. And we have some funds in a, with the Bayside Project, traffic impact fees that will help pay for this, and then the most likely other source is our traffic impact fee funds. So, at this point, we're applying for the grant. Hopefully, we can get another award from TIB like we did from Tremont and be able to fund this, this project. We do have roughly an $8,700 budget amendment still coming forward that was not, it isn't this item, but related to this. It got us to the permit, the ability to, you know, it was the permitting and the envi, some environmental review that we had to have. Is that correct, Mike? You previously awarded that contract. The work was done, and we still haven't brought that budget amendment that'll come forward in August, I believe.
Correct.
Yes, a question. When will we find out whether we would get the funds?
This fall? I think the, once the application, Mr. Dorsey would know that off the top of his head.
I believe it's November. I believe TIB, the applications are due in August. They're scored by TIB staff in September, and then there's, the TIB meets and awards are made in November, I believe.
Because when we were looking at, you know, Mr. Dorsey was talking, we were looking at construction in 2019. That's why I was...
Yes. If, if we get the award from TIB.
Yeah. Cool.
So, it's really contingent upon us getting this, this grant award.
Right.
Councilmember Ashby?
Just a question. Do we have, would we be able to move this project forward without a TIB award?
I don't think we could afford to.
Okay.
I'll see how.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna offer up the bake sale, too. They're pretty good. Councilmember Chang?
I was just wondering if you could tell a little more how the 315 from Bayside was arrived at. Did we ask them? Did they offer? What percentage is that?
So, I'll speak to it a little bit, although I wish Nick was here because he is the source on the issue. So, we collect a Bayside mitigation impact fee in that residence area, and Rob probably knows which one I'm talking about.
It's a, it's in the city of Bremerton.
But it's adjacent to...
Adjacent to, and it had an impact. So, we were able to ask for impact fees related, because we don't, can't charge our impact fees. And actually, when this happened, we didn't even have impact fees. So, this, this is money we've had for a while.
Yeah.
That's, needs to get used somewhere on that corridor.
And so, the money is restricted for that quarter, just as the mayor said. And actually, it's only really for this project of all the projects we have. And so, the total balance we have in the fund currently is about $311,000 to date. We anticipate about four more houses to record and file those impact fees, and then they're done. And so, the Bayside mitigation fee will go away. I wouldn't expect to see anything in the 2019 and forward budgets because we're going to allocate it for this project if it's awarded, and then spent on this project. So, we're projecting 315 to be it.
Thank you. I just wondered if we calculated their impact on the projected use of the, and then sort of assign them their, what we thought their portion would be. But instead, it looks like we just got a per-unit fee.
We, through a SEPA process, we negotiated the impact.
I'm just wondering if they're paying enough. I mean, it seems like their impacts should be higher.
That decision was made many years ago.
Okay. Before they were built?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that's not anything we can change at this point. The housing development, other than a couple of homes, is completed. But we do have some money to help pay for the intersection. Other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution supporting the TIB Transportation Improvement Board 2018 Urban Arterial Funding, Funding Application for the Old Clifton Road-Anderson Hill Road Southwest Intersection Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to 7C, Approval of Change Orders Number Four, Five, and Six to Contract Number 037.1-17 with Active Construction, Inc., for the Tremont Widening Project. Mr. Pleasance?
I thank you again. Bear with me on this one. On June 27th, 2017, the Port Orchard City Council approved Contract Number 037-17 with Active Construction, Incorporated, for the Tremont Street Widening Project. On April 24th, 2018, council authorized the mayor to execute Change Order Number One, being the 16-inch diameter sanitary sewer force main change in condition not to exceed amount of $250,000. On May 8th, 2018, council approved Change Order Number One A, which amended the actual Change Order Number One cost to, of work reduced to $242,906.33, and authorized the mayor to execute Change Order Number Two, being the re-alignment of Gold, of the Golden Pond Kaiser Permanente four-inch diameter sanitary sewer force mains along Pottery Avenue, changes in condition not to exceed amount of $150,000. Although, although the amendment to change order, to Change Order Number Two is not yet ready to process, the current force account value has been placed within the project change order recip, recipulation for future action by council. On June 26th, council approved Change Order Number Three, being the SR16 Tremont Interchange Illumination Power Meter Base Relocation Change in Condition Not to Exceed Amount of $116,000, $116,889.50. Tonight's action, being the authorization to proceed immediately with lump sum change orders Number Four, Number Five, and Number Six are associated with, one, the overexcavation, removal of unsuitable materials for WL5 and WL6 installation, the additional, two, the additional power supply for both roundabouts, and three, the regrading of ditches respectively. As mentioned before, the change order approval process between the contractor, the city's CACM team, and Wash dot highways and local programs will not occur in time for this regular meeting and cannot wait. Therefore, the city's Public Works Department is requesting authorization for the mayor to execute Change Order Number Four in an amount of $18,309.41, Change Order Number Five in an amount of $69,000, $69,720.34, and Change Order Number Six in an amount of $75,179.29 with Active Construction, Incorporated, at this time. In general summary, the current value of all change orders to date total $648,354.87, or 64.8% of the contingency value. Funding is provided within the approved 2017-2018 budget for this project. Staff recommends approval of Change Orders Number Four, Number Five, and Number Six with Active Construction, Incorporated, with a total amount of $163,209.4 added to the current contract amount.
Councilmember Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute Change Order Number Four, Number Five, and Number Six with Active Construction, Inc., with the total amount of $163,209.4 added to the current contract amount.
Second.
A motion and a second. Nice job, Mr. Pleasance. I don't know where Mr. Dorsey came up with the word recapulation. I've never come across that ever, but he, he does get...
It is on the change order documents that we have to prepare.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll go with that. So, other comments or questions about these change orders, which you're about to vote on here this evening? Councilmember Deener?
The additional power supply for both roundabouts, what is that?
So, each roundabout, there are services needed for controls, the monument sign in the Western Roundabout, and then we've also added additional power boxes for connections that we potentially will need for our crews or what, what you might want out in there.
For Santa, maybe even, I don't know.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Okay, you'll be voting on the approval of Change Orders Number Four, Five, and Six, Contract Number 037-17 with Active Construction, Inc., for the Tremont Widening Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the action is approved. So, we're to item 7D, which is a discussion of paving options. Mike and I have had a couple of meetings about this, and I thought we had this resolved about 60 days ago. As, as we know, we, at one point, we were talking about hortsman, but West Sound Utility hasn't done the sewer main still on that road. And last thing we want to do is pave the road and then have them come in and cut half of it up with a new sewer main. We were going to move forward with Cedric and Sidney, and we needed to do a, we, we lacked the capacity at this time to do design and prepare bid specs. The county, I found out that the county was going to do a project just outside the city limits to the top of Lighter Road. The county commissioners were agreeable to incorporating our project into theirs. They've had a bit of scope creep, and sometimes when you put more asphalt down, you have to make stormwater improvements. And they've been the victim of that. They're pushing their project out to probably 2022. It's going to be a while before they, to get to that. We can't wait that long. Our road needs to be paved. So, we're back to, the staff's recommendation and mine is, in our 20, to use our $2018 to go and design and prepare this for the bid specs. That process will take us beyond the paving window this year. If that's, we've looked at other projects through the pavement management system. Lippert, in particular, is on that list and is getting a lot of use right now because of the Tremont construction. It'd be a great street to, to, to pave, but it would be, I think we'd get shot if we started grinding up Lippert right now with Tremont the way that it is. Also, Pottery from Cedar Heights to Lakeway is, or Berry Lake, excuse me, is, is on the list, but we think we should stay away from that area also. There's a couple of residential streets that are on the list, but it's, it's a handful of houses that, that would benefit from it. So, we just don't feel that's the best way to spend those dollars either. We're still going to do our typical roughly $100,000 worth of grindouts and, and patches throughout the city and address, you know, specific areas. But as far as a complete overlay, we just don't have a good project to bring forward right now. And I just wanted to talk to you guys about that, and make sure you're comfortable if we bring forward a contract for that, that design work and the, the bid specs for, for that section of Sidney and Cedric, that you're comfortable with that, and that we wouldn't get to it till next year.
How much do we envision spending on that design work?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Pleasance.
I guess, I guess it depends on which project. If we're going through that Sidney, as, as defined already, I, I would say in the, in the $50,000 to $100,000 range is my guess right now. But we haven't started going through the conversation because we weren't sure which direction we were going to go here.
I would say we're going to spend at least $50,000, and I wish we had an engineer on staff that could do it. We're still trying to recruit for, you know, we've got the contract staff on site. We've gotten one more application from a recent, recent college graduate on the East Coast. It's not exactly what we're looking for. So, unfortunately, these consultants are very busy and charging a premium for their time. So, I think we're going to easily spend $50,000 to get this, you know, get that project out the door, which I wish we didn't have to do it that way. I wish we had the capacity to do it in-house, but...
As do I. I, you know, I get frustrated with how much we spend on design and how little we spend on paving. And, you know, I, I'm not yet convinced that the grindout patching that we do is really cost-effective. I've noticed that some of the grindout patching, as you approach our roundabout coming up from town, is already going away, and we'll need another grindout patch. So, versus just doing a complete overlay, which is something that we used to do on a regular basis, and we were able to keep up on our residential streets. So, and I appreciate times have changed, and traffic demands have changed, and cities growing, but...
And a bigger piece of it, too, is stormwater and ADA compliance. So, when we, well, we used to be able to just throw some blacktop down. Now, we, if we pave that whole street, we have to make sure that we're ADA compliant and that we have, you know, the, the adequate storm facilities.
So, many of our streets in the city that are desperately needing resurfacing don't even have sidewalks. So, I'm not sure what the ADA implementations would be on that.
We would have to put stormwater and sidewalks, I believe, in to pave it, from fogline to fogline.
I don't want to argue the point here. I'm just sharing my frustration.
And, and as I do, too.
We spend a lot of money on figuring out what it is we need to do before we can actually do it, and it's frustrating.
I guess that I didn't understand everything you said, or I wasn't listening with great intent.
Okay. I'll try to clarify.
But we have this money, and we have it in the budget that we're going to do a certain amount of street repair. And I appreciate that we are charging the tab fees, and so we have that pot of money that we need to get out on the streets for our citizens. But I'm also looking at the shortfall that we have for the Anderson Hill-Old Clifton Roundabout. And are we better off? I guess I haven't thought about saving some of this money and putting it there if we're not going to get much of our bang for our buck, you know, doing these other things.
Difference there is one, I think it's a different pot of dollars. It's repairs and maintenance versus a capital project.
Okay. I want to, I want to raise the hand for Farragut Avenue to get some pavement.
And we could identify, you know, three or five small residential streets that, that would get, you know, a, probably, Mike, you, you're, you're the engineer. What's the terminology for it when we would do something of that nature? If we, if we identified three or five residential streets and just went out and put some blacktop on them?
We can do something similar that we did last year with the residential paving, and we identified a few areas that had some issues. And, you know, we can, instead of just doing 30-foot patches, you know, we can look at hiring somebody to do, you know, 200-foot runs, which we have several of those small streets identified in the pavement... 200-foot runs, which we have several of those small streets identified in the pavement management system. Again, that's...these are identified streets. A lot of them are, you know, three to four home streets. They're not connectors. So, we're looking at that when you're trying to improve the roadway system. I did want to add one thing, though. Just, I don't know if it's been brought up in these meetings, but Washdaw is working on an overlay for State Route 166, and they're planning to go and do this next summer. This will be continuing on on Bay Street from down near the bridge all the way up to the city limits. So, by the end of next summer, that will all be overlaid. It's not our project, but we will have some new asphalt there that will be appreciated.
And stop at city limits?
Yes.
Yeah, and we...
That's where 166 stops.
And we thought initially we were going to have a significant obligation in the sidewalk ramps, and we recently learned that it won't be our responsibility, so, which is good news. But, you know, it's just how do we want to deploy roughly $100,000 this year? We could end...we could...I think we want to design that Sedgwick and Sidney. It might eat all of it. It might eat half of it. We won't know until we procure that, you know, and if...what's the...what we don't want to do is the public works department is extremely short-staffed. I don't want to waste their time on a process that you're not comfortable and don't want to approve, and so I want some...a little direction here. Where do we want to put these staff resources so that we can do something productive?
I vote to move it to design.
That's design of that project?
I didn't hear what you said.
Move it to design of the Sidney.
The Sedgwick-Sidney area is what is...and that's what our recommendation is, is to...
Do we have any idea, once it's designed, if we're going to have enough money to actually put the asphalt out?
I think that's just the quantities equation there. It's the...we've got traffic loops in there. We've got manholes. We've got water valves. It's putting those in the specs is what the design's about.
Okay.
And when we get to the actual construction, it's just, you know, this much asphalt and, you know, make sure these things happen, too.
My concern is simply that we get a $50,000 design, and then we don't...we don't have the money to put the asphalt down.
So, I think we're going to have the car tab fee for repairs and maintenance, whether... and I think if we're going to move forward this design, it's with the intent, in 2019, we're going to pave that.
Yeah.
Go out to bid in the spring to pave that.
So, and I'm going to play the new kid on the block card. So...
Two more meetings.
Okay, thanks. So, if...I know we're short-staffed, so, and just building off Councilman Claussen's comment, is this something where we could wait to spend the dollars to see if we get the engineer, or even if we had the engineer, we would not be doing this project in-house?
Correct.
Because if we're...even if we had the engineer, we wouldn't do the project in-house, and, you know, I'm kind of like, okay, then we shouldn't move forward with design anyway. But if we're...if we could save funding by having the engineer in-house, then I say, why don't we wait a little while and see if we do get an engineer in-house in the next several months or whatever, and then move forward.
To answer your question, the staff member that we're trying to recruit is to keep up with the development activity. It's not...I think we should consider in the next budget process another engineering, because what I identified at, I think it was in my mayor's report at the last meeting, was Bremerton has discovered that the construction environment right now on those curb ramps, that designing it in-house is way more cost-effective. So, we almost need a transportation person, that that's really all they're going to do is develop our paving projects, our ADA transition plan, and they're doing all that design work so that we can put pavement out with contractors, and our public works staff is potentially doing sidewalk ramps, because we can do them for a few thousand dollars apiece versus $20,000 apiece if we have the design work done ourselves. So, I think that's where we need to head, but it doesn't help today.
I'm afraid the job market is hindering us, because I would agree with you that, you know, three projects, we basically paid for an engineer, and there's a lot more that they can do than just three projects in a year. But unfortunately, there's not a lot of engineers standing around waiting to come to work to Port Orchard, so I hope long-term we can do this. It's, you know, we have to engineer apparently everything that we're doing now, so that's going to be a cost of doing business as we go forward. I'm just, you know, I'm concerned that as we move forward, there's always going to be this immediate fire in front of us, and we're falling further and further and further behind on all of the residential streets. You mentioned Farragut. You know, I could point to West Street up there. That's more than three houses that has lots of challenges with it, and it's slowly falling apart. There's others. Tacoma Street is another one that is slowly withering away, and we're just not keeping up on it. So, that, you know, a few years ago, as you know, Mr. Mayor, the pavement management plan was going to help us identify so we could move forward on an organized method of making these improvements, and so far, we haven't really made any organized improvements. We've dealt with the fire in hand with...and granted that they were projects that needed to be done. I'm not disputing that. Sedgwick is a good example for Sidney to the highway kind of a thing, needed it desperately, but again, that's not fixing Farragut. It's not fixing Perry. It's not fixing some of these other major streets in our city, and they're just, like I said, they're just slowly disintegrating before our eyes.
We're not so slowly. I'd like to add on to what Councilman Claussen said, Sidney beyond Lippert. I heard a lot about that one when we were out. And I'm wondering if this isn't two-time sensitive, if there's time for maybe council at a work study to look over the...review the pavement management system and just sort of see the different projects and...
Yeah, the projects you're pointing to, though, are major capital projects. They're not paving projects. Your Sidney heading south is, as Mark Dorsey talked to recently...we're talking a $5 million project.
Oh, I don't dispute that. I'm just saying that that's what comes to mind. Maybe if we can review the list, there's something else that...
These aren't...the things you're pointing to aren't on the list. We've got, as I spoke to earlier, there are the priority streets right now we want to stay away from for at least another year or two, and it's what are we going to do in this interim step? And where we don't have sidewalks and stormwater improvement, those are capital projects, not street overlay projects, because of the same thing the county's running into on Sidney heading up to Lighter. We start, you know, we go fogline to fogline with an overlay. We have other requirements imposed upon us, and that's why we end up doing these grindouts and patches, because then we don't have, you know, we made it...we put a Band-Aid on it, but we didn't make it the way we want to make it, and we have to do those where there's sidewalks, and we go to fogline to fogline. We need to do...to fix the ramps to ADA compliant. We had this was one of the $30,000 items there just at Bethel and Lund when we paved that, so...
And maybe it's just, I don't understand completely why these things have gotten to be so expensive, but once again, Fred mentioned the Sidney south of Lippert. There are no sidewalks. There aren't, you know, no stormwater, so...
But if we do a complete overlay, that's what triggers those things. That's what I'm being told.
Triggers the development of a sidewalk?
I'm going to defer to the engineers that tell me this information. So, we...that's why we do the patchwork that we do.
So, there's several of these projects that are identified in the pavement management system, including Bethel, including...I don't think Lippert's on there in what I'm talking about, but they're listed there as well as on our tip. And on the tip, the transportation program, that is identifying roads that we've decided in this group that we want to have a complete street. So, we want to put in sidewalks. We want to put in the storm system. So, there are some of these bigger roads that we could potentially just overlay for a half a million dollars or something along those lines, which would be, you know, probably two years of funding for that. But you have to just decide whether or not we're going to keep that on the tip, or do we want to spend money on something that within 10 years that we're going to replace, and that's a challenge for the bigger ones.
I think, you know, in my mind, some of the streets that you mentioned, I totally understand and totally agree. Those are major capital improvements. You talk about Bethel Road. We need to do a complete street just because of the traffic volumes. What I'm talking about is a street out here in front of City Hall that is slowly going away, or some of these others, whether it be south of Lippert on Sidney, that probably doesn't have a tenth of the volume that Bethel has, but it's still our city street that needs to be taken care of, and if we don't address it before long, we're going to be driving back in the horse and buggy on gravel roads, because they're just flat, going away before our eyes. Right up in front is a good example of the street that just alligatored so badly that I'm not sure how much longer it's going to last before we need to do something. Now, we don't need to...I mean, here, we have sidewalks, so then we have an issue, but when you're talking some of these streets, Farragut's a good example. You don't have sidewalks up there. Sidney south of Lippert doesn't have sidewalks. Great, it'd be wonderful if we could go in and do the whole nine yards and put in sidewalks and everything else, but in the short term, it'd be nice just to have a nice, safe driving surface if people go on, so that...
What about a hybrid here, Mike? How long would it take you to procure or get a cost estimate of a design for Sedgwick and Sidney? Can you pull that off and still, if we've got...I mean, I think we've got 100 and more than $100,000 in the paving budget this year, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, we could potentially pick off a couple of streets as well as get the design and set the table for a spring project that has a road that's in very bad shape and has a tremendous amount of traffic on it.
You know, I kind of like your thought. My only concern, well, the two issues, and I'm speaking out of the other side of my mouth, respecting the fact that public works is very, very busy, and maybe what we need to do is this year, spend the money that we have and design these projects, be it Sidney south of Sedgwick or these others that we think that we should be looking at, so that start next year, we have the design worked on. We could then just go out to bid when you guys have more time to administer the construction project, but at least we'll have a couple, two or three designs on the shelf that we could build, and that might help them with their workload this year that they could just administer a consultant for two or three road projects that we could build for next year. We're going to be going into the next biennial budget, so next spring, we're going to be spending money out of the next budget, so we can plan for that and hopefully start attacking some of these residential streets.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is use the pavement management tool for sure Sedgwick and Sidney and identify something else that we design at the same time, and so that we have a couple of projects in the hopper.
I think it would be great alternating. I'd rather do five miles of city streets, residential streets, one year, and one mile of a major project like Sidney and Sedgwick the next year. At least we're, you know, we're spreading the pavement around.
I think we could do a little bit of both.
Could be.
If, possibly. We, you know, I just...we've got some significant capital projects right now that we've got to have our full attention on to deliver on time and on budget, so...
Well, as you know, as we get into the budget development, I'm, as we have, you and I both have for a number of years, kept arguing about we need more money in pavement, and I'm going to continue to...
Yeah, and I agree with you.
Speak out on it, so...
Okay, so, we...you know, I'm not hearing that if we bring forward a contract for a consultant to design something, that everybody's going to hang us in the back room, so. So, I think I've got some direction from you guys, and we'll move forward with that.
I think when it comes time to talk about residential streets, for me, it would be helpful if we maybe got in a van and drove some of these so that I could have a better understanding of what we're talking about and look at it.
Well, that was part of the whole pavement management system, is they went up and did that for us.
Yeah, they did, and what we'll do is we'll provide you a list of what we're considering.
Right.
And it not only addressed, some of the streets look the worst. Some of the things that look...it was the subgrades were part of the equation.
Right.
It wasn't, you know, it wasn't going to be good money to go out and do an overlay on something that's going to be a complete rebuild. So, some of the worst streets aren't first on the list, because it would be wasting our money. They really need to be a capital project, and that's what that pavement management system did for us, was evaluated the curbs, the sidewalks, the subgrade, and the road surface. So, we'll share with...before we start paving streets, we'll share with you a list of what we're considering. Mr. Claussen?
Two more quick comments. One is, these streets have been out there operating for 50, 60 years with cars on top of them, so whatever's under that pavement, if we throw more pavement on top, it'll be another 20, 30 years before we need to replace that. That's my only comment on some of the residential streets, not the main ones. The second one on the state in 166, you might draw their attention to the west side of town. We've got a couple of areas out there just before Ross Point and just after Ross Point that is starting to sink away again, so I'm sure they're aware of it, but I would like to make sure that we bring their attention to it.
I believe there is another overlay project scheduled for later in the summer. I'm not sure exactly where it is, but I know that they're scheduling a night closure again. They had to let us know because of our impacts of our Tremont detour.
Yes, good.
Okay, I think we belabored this long enough.
Thank you, and I apologize for...
No, not at all. I appreciate the comments.
Getting on my soapbox.
Okay, so we are back to the two items that this is now seven, it looks like E, which would be previously consent item C, adoption of a resolution approving mayoral appointments to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And Clerk Reiner, do you want to speak to that, and I'll add what I know to the process?
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Council. So pursuant to Port Orchard Municipal Code 2.22 and state law, the city council shall review the membership of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee annually and make appropriate changes by recommendation of the mayor. The mayor is recommending a representative from the following organization, businesses to serve on the Lodging Tax Committee upon a council's acceptance. A business required to collect the tax would be Days Inn and Mrs. Howe's Bed and Breakfast. An organization involved in activities would be Saints Car Club and Port of Bremerton. In addition, at the July 9, 2018 Economic Development and Tourism Committee, Councilmember Rosa Pepe agreed to serve as the chair of the committee. Staff recommends them...excuse me. The mayor recommends approving the appointment of the members, and the chair is presented.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the mayor's appointments of a representative from Days Inn and Mrs. Howe's Bed and Breakfast as businesses required to collect the tax, and the Port of Bremerton and the Saints Car Club as organizations involved in activities to serve on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and to confirm the appointment of Councilmember Rosa Pepe as chair of the committee.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do you have a question, Mr. Chang?
Yeah, I was just interested in some of the reasoning in selecting the two organizations that were picked.
I went to the list and looked at who hadn't served in the longest period of time. The first ask I made was the VCB, and they declined, and so from there, the next two that hadn't served in a while was the Saints Club, Cart Club, and the Port of Bremerton. I believe it was the Chamber had done it in the last two years. If it wasn't last year, Popsa was on that more recently serving. I imagine you guys have the matrix open in front of you, so you can look at them. So, I just went to who hadn't served in a while and started with those and, you know, and asked if they would consider.
And I'll remind the council that we are limited to the number of committee members by how many hoteliers serve, so it has to be equal hoteliers versus recipients that can use the tax. So, we did reach out to all the hoteliers. Couple of them we never heard from. We reached out to all of them via email, phone call, and in person by the mayor.
Personal phone calls.
Couple of them declined. Couple of them, no response, and as you can see, a couple of them accepted. So, once we had our two, then we had to go and find the other two.
Thank you. I appreciate the information. I was just, I guess, a little surprised I was just, I guess, a little surprised that the Port of Bremerton was selected because at first glance, they struck me more as a sort of quasi-governmental agency as opposed to an organization more actively involved in tourist activities. I guess it would be probably Kathy Garcia.
That's who I specifically asked for. I wasn't, not, not someone she was going to appoint. Kathy herself was willing to serve, and she was.
Thank you.
That's Kathy Garcia, at the Port of Bremerton. Other questions? Okay, you'd be voting on the adoption of a, a resolution approving mayoral appointments to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to the next item, uh, the item seven F, which was formerly consent item D, approval of a lease with Don Jake, two forty Klein Avenue LLC for the right of way adjacent to two four, four twenty Klein Avenue for additional parking. Clerk Reiner.
Yes. So, the, the city was approached to have the ability to use the adjacent right of way to have parking for their building. We, uh, found out that the building had been sold, and so the new building owner had requested, um, some parking. So, with that, the city has leased a small portion of Klein Avenue rights of way since nineteen eighty-one. The previous lease was with Ness and Associates. The leased area is approximately eighteen hundred square feet, and the proposed use of the lease is for businesses to have additional parking to serve their clients. Ness and Associates sold the building to Don Jake, who is a CPA. The new owner, Ms. Jake, is requesting to enter into a lease with the same terms and conditions as the previous owner. The lease before you is being proposed for one year with the option to renew at a yearly rate of nine hundred and eighteen dollars plus leasehold excise tax. The name of her business is four twenty Klein, so that's why, um, if, if you noticed, it's, it's not a typo, it is the address and the name of the building or business. So, staff recommends the approval of the lease agreement as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Councilmember Chang?
I move to approve the lease agreement with four twenty Klein Avenue LLC for leasing public rights of way adjacent to four twenty Klein Avenue as described in the lease agreement presented.
Second. Motion a second, just a little background. We, as Brandy had stated, the Ron Ness, the lo, the local attorney, had leased that particular right of way for years, his first parking lot. Ron passed away last year, and, uh, I think the state has sold the building. They canceled the lease after we had had it appraised and entered into a new lease. They canceled the lease, and now the new building owner, which is a local CPA, who's moving into it, or desires to have the same parking arrangement as the law firm had.
I was just interested, I, I think it makes sense also, the geography there is such that, Dwight Avenue is, is not a thoroughfare. It is however near the courthouse. Do you happen to know how many spots are involved or how many cars can park there?
So, the lease agreement allows them to park up to six vehicles in that area.
And do you know how many leases like this we have in the downtown area?
Handful.
We have this one and then Kitsepp.
We have the, the Titus lease, we have the lease with the bowling alley for the, we kept, we sold part of the property and kept the portion if we ever needed to, uh, expand the circumference of the roundabout.
So, four or five in, just in the downtown area?
It seems unique because it's in a residential area. Those are adjacent to more commercial areas.
Just a historical.
Yeah, this is in our business professional, I believe that's own business professional in that area.
Klein is?
Mm-hmm, that area up there.
Or government.
That's residential as well. There's a community facility on the east side of Klein, but the west side of Klein, I believe, is still residential.
Regardless, this, this has been a historical action that we've done, whether, regardless of how it's, so there are a number of law offices and professional buildings right there.
And restaurants.
And restaurants in that area, so. It was appraised at a commercial value, and that's how we arrived at the dollar amount. Other questions? Okay, you'd be voting on, uh, the approval of a lease with Don Jake, four twenty Klein Avenue LLC for a right of way adjacent to four twenty Klein Avenue for additional parking. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or none, the lease is approved. That is the end of our, uh, business items. Where to our committee reports? Mr. Clausen, do you have anything to report on the finance committee?
Well, actually, we just had the finance committee earlier this evening, and I'd like to thank Cindy Lucarelli for filling in for Sean, who wasn't able to attend today. We did go through the, uh, reports that we normally review on a monthly basis, our sales tax receipts, our re, money receipts. Looked at briefly at various account balances for some of the operating accounts. I will just share that we, we got a new format for our, our reports on sales tax and so on, which actually, uh, hopefully we can get a copy out to the rest of the council as well. It makes it much easier to, uh, very quickly grasp what, where we are and how we're doing. Just as an example, right now, we're about eight point four percent over in our sales tax receipts for this year over budgeted amounts, so. Hopefully, sales tax will continue to come in, uh, strong. The other things that we, we talked about, we went through some new reporting formats that Noah has proposed for the Tremont widening projects. We went through, uh, both what was initially established as a budget, what our approved budgets are and kind of where we are in expenditures. It was very nice to be able to go through those and see very quickly how we were doing in those projects. We also used, or Noah used the same format for our McCormick Park project, so we were able to see how that was, uh, moving forward. We talked briefly about a, an ordinance coming forward to the next finance committee and hopefully eventually to the council. As some of you may know, when, in the couple, last couple of years, when come December, we don't meet, maybe we skip a meeting at the end of December. And we have a challenge in that we still need to pay the bills whether the council meets or not. We have always had to delegate authority to the finance director to pay the bills in our absence, and we will approve them come the January meetings. We're going to experience a similar circumstance this year with our abbreviated schedule for August in that we're kind of combining two council meetings and eliminating the work study and replacing it with a council meeting. So, that gives half of the month without the council meeting, which, once again, is going to be a challenge for, uh, the city to be able to pay the bills. And what Noah is proposing is an ordinance that would essentially recognize those situations and similar circumstances throughout the year, that, uh, the finance director would have the authority to go ahead and authorize the bills, and then he would bring it back to the council for approval, uh, after the fact, more or less. And if the council, for some reason, did not agree with a bill, then it would be up to the finance director to start, I guess, collection actions to recoup the funds that, uh, we had paid. But we're kind of just reviewing that. We had some control concerns that we want to make sure are in place. And, uh, he kind of walked through the process now where there's a number of, I think you shared at least five different review, uh, before a bill is paid, you have the different department director approving it, a couple of finance staff, the mayor, before they actually get to us for our approval. So, there's, appears to be good, still checks and balances in there, but we wanted to see it in writing, so we're going to be reviewing that as we move forward. We also talked briefly about, uh, we've break, we, we've asked Noah to break out the utility funds, both the water and the sewer, and kind of show us, um, on an easy-to-read format, how we're doing both on the expenditure side, operational side, as well as the capital side, how we're doing compared to what the revenues are, and forecasting that out into the future so that we can see that we've got, uh, you know, enough revenue coming in to cover both our anticipated expenses as well as the capital projects that are in our, our capital plan. And he was able to do that both for the sewer as well as the water fund, so we can kind of see how, um, the financial stability is for those two utilities as we go off into the future, so. Those are kind of the highlights. Did I miss anything, Noah?
No, I think you did a great job. And the, and the last point is, uh, so, a few months ago, I brought to finance committee the concept of marrying our enterprise funds or water sewer in a similar nature that our general fund had set up. So, we have our general fund, which we cover operations, and then we have our Fund Three O Two, which we cover our capital construction projects. Two separate funds provides a more clear transparency of what's going on on the capital side as well as what's going on the operations side. What the city currently has in place is one fund for water sewer operations and capital called four oh one. So, when we try to pull out information and talk about it, it makes it more difficult because we have, um, essentially one fund covering two different enterprises with two different distinct functions, one being operations and one being capital construction for both water projects and then for sewer projects. So, one proposal I came forward with, I'd like to, in this budget process, do some fund restructuring and create a capital fund for our water sewer and have a water sewer operations fund. When I brought that forward, the finance committee again requested that if you're going to separate, take it that far, let's, let's review what they would look like to treat them completely separate as a complete water fund utility and a sewer fund utility. And so, that was the exercise that we went through. And the analysis that we provided to the finance committee is identify any concerns that you would have of, as to moving from one fund to four. I think there's a lot of policy, positive upside with that. Transparency being one, budgeting being another, because you can pull up and you'll be able to pull open a, a water capital project fund and see what capital projects are clearly identified in that fund. You'll be able to identify the water operations side as well separately to see how the operations are performing. So, there's some real positive upsides to that, and we just wanted to make sure that we were fully vetting all the possible downsides of splitting a fund like that up. And I think when we went through that exercise and forecasted out ten years and put in as many kind of, uh, critical concerns, we were conservative on our forecasting of revenue, we're conservative on our forecasting of connection fee charges. We found that the two funds, if we were to split them into a water sewer enterprise and a, a water enterprise and a sewer enterprise, that the funds from an operational standpoint could cover itself, and the capital program for the six-year CIP as it's currently laid out can go forward. So, that made us get a lot more comfortable with the idea of separating one fund into four to achieve some policy goals as well as account, accounting goals.
I think I would add to it, is one of the concerns that you always have is one fund subsidizing the other utility. And now we have information that shows them standing alone, so we know how the rates are for each of those utilities. And the being able to forecast out, you know, five, six years, at least, you know, I'll share that the wastewater fund is in great shape. The water fund has some issues five or so years out. But the beauty of this exercise is that we've got five years to address it, and we kind of talked about, one of the first things we need to do is go through our capital list and make sure that all those projects that are on there are still something that we, we need. And then if they are, then we can start planning out, uh, you know, very carefully how we would address that, and we've got plenty of time to deal with it, so. I think it was a great exercise. Thank you for going through that, and it certainly helped me get a better understanding of how our utilities are doing, which is something that we have to do regardless because they're a separate enterprise fund from our general fund for the operation of the city.
And it came with fabulous PowerPoint slide pictures, too. We were concerned about some of the choices and colors, though, in the graphs, but.
We're working on the colors.
We'll, we'll refine that before it goes in full council.
Brown for sewer.
Go back to black and white.
Remember, you're dealing with people with different demographic eyes than you may have.
Demograph, that's a new one.
Wow. Racially diverse eyes.
ADA there somewhere.
All right, is that it?
That, that was it, sir, thank you.
Okay, we are on to, uh, economic development tourism.
And we will not have an August meeting. We will be meeting again the second Monday in September. And one of our primary agenda items is discussing the, uh, plastic bag issue, the one-use plastic bag issue, yeah.
Okay, and since you hit on that, I didn't have that on my mayor's report. There is a sustainable cinema, uh, showing Thursday night, six thirty, at the Dragonfly. It's free, and they're asking for a donation, and if you're willing to come and be about an, an hour of your evening, uh, the movie's, it's about forty-five minutes long, I'm told by, uh, Councilmember Chang, or, excuse me, Commissioner Grito. So, hope to see you there. I'll be there with my.
Sorry, what kind of donation?
Whatever you.
Cash donation?
Whatever you feel is appropriate. Maybe buy some popcorn, too.
Popcorn.
Oh, okay, so it's a donation to the theater.
To the theater, for the use of their theater.
Sure.
Correct. Okay, utilities?
Right now, it doesn't look like we're going to be having an August meeting. We'll confirm that, but, uh, Public Works is pretty busy. But September seventeenth would be the next one then, and, and that would be at nine thirty AM at City Hall. We'll get that word out about, um, utilities in August. Do you know, Mike, have you heard?
I believe it's been canceled.
Yeah, I think so.
I saw an email to that effect, that the meeting had been canceled.
I think it was, okay. There you have it. Sewer Advisory Committee, that's August fifteenth, six thirty PM, and that's at the sewer plant.
Land Use?
Land Use is August sixth at nine thirty AM at DCD. I will be away.
And I'm not sure what's on the agenda or.
Be there.
All right, and I saw, I saw your email that to proceed without you and somebody wanting to fill in for Councilmember Deena. We can, we can proceed with two.
I think we should postpone or skip it.
Okay, well, it just depends on what Nick's got on his agenda. I think it's time sensitive, so we'll circle back. Okay? And the Chair of the Lodging Tax Advisor Committee, will you have the report?
Uh, not at this time, we're putting some meetings together, and I'll have more information at our next meeting.
All right. Festival of Chimes and Lights, looks like you got flyers.
Yes, so we have our application form ready to go. We'll be distributing these, um, this week and next. This form will also be available on the city website. August third is the official start date that we'll be accepting applications. You can fill these out, it's a fifty-dollar charge that covers the tree. And, um, what we're going to be doing is, we have made a map, um, and noted where the planters are. So, all fifty-eight planters downtown will be available, um, to have a tree if you want them. About four or five of them will not be able to have power sources. Otherwise, um, we already have quite a few people are very interested. We're at the POPSa meeting and the merchants, and quite a few people there were real excited about this tree decorating contest. So, if you're interested in the application form, I have them tonight, and, um, the early bird gets the planter of choice.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Yes. I miss, I didn't miss hear, I misunderstood when Cindy talked about the trees, and she was saying live trees. And in my mind, a live tree was.
Has a root ball on it.
A living tree, exactly. So, um, anyway, so I just want everyone to understand, these are fresh trees. They're cut fresh trees.
Right, and we're actually, we're using the term fresh.
Yeah.
It was a, it was misspoken when it was live. Yeah, so we're actually using the term fresh. These are going to be recycled at the end, you know, it's, it's not going to be a permanent tree.
Yeah, I've got hopes of planting it somewhere.
Yeah, I heard the, I heard the same thing you did.
Yeah, it's, it would be very difficult to have those stay in good shape, anyway.
They're still alive trees.
They are, they are. And actually, you know, the decorating will take place in November, the twelfth through the twentieth. So, that would be the week that you would decorate your tree. Public Works is going to be putting these up the fifth through the ninth, and they will stay up through the new year, right, the beginning of the new year. Then they will be up for Chimes and Lights. They will be judged the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
So, in terms of lights on and lights off, is that just a, how does that measure?
I'm sorry.
It's really the same power source that we now do the. It's really the same power source that we now do the lights for the POPS A lights, the icicle lights. It'll be running above through the marquee.
They're on all the time.
They're on all the time, okay.
Now, you guys don't do LED lights. Are you sure you've got enough power?
We do have enough power, and we are encouraging LED lights.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Are you sure you have enough power?
We'll find out.
I mean, I'm just saying, because I have been down there when they have strung the lights for POPS A.
They don't use LED. They use incandescent.
Yeah, and if you put too many on, it blows the fuse. That's just, yeah.
That's POPS A, POPS A chooses, they don't reuse those lights. They feel it's challenging to store them and get them untangled, so they go with incandescent lights for LEDs. Because I questioned it before.
In Port Orchard, almost everything is a gamble, so what we're really going to do is make the best use of the resources that we have for as long as we can.
We're going to put a tree, we're going to put some trees up.
Yeah, I don't think you want to count on lights for this.
Are these three-foot trees?
No, they're six.
Ten-foot trees?
They're six-foot trees.
Six-foot, okay.
They're six-foot trees with a portion of the trunk actually being down into the pot, at least a foot. And they will be secured by Public Works, so when the winds come up, they will not blow away. But.
So about how much of the tree is to be decorated? Is that then five feet?
Four to five feet.
Four to five feet, okay.
Uh-huh, and the challenge is on.
All right.
Yes.
All right. So we are on to report of outside agencies. Kitsap Transit, we had a fabulous exercise at our last meeting, and we were armed with stickers. I think we might have to bring it to our next committee's assignments. It worked very well. We were, we were presented with about a hundred names to consider for naming ferries that are under construction. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Clausen, the boat that'll serve between Port Orchard and Bremerton, the new hybrid electric, it will be the MV Waterman. We have the Lady Swift and the Reliance, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Ilahi and Manette are the others' names for the mosquito fleet vessels, so traveling to and from.
And there was a, there was one other one, in case we build three boats, and I can't remember.
Yeah.
Ilahi, Manette.
Dauntless, or was the Dauntless got scratched because it sank?
Yeah, that one, we took off.
So we've still got some research to make sure that, you know, I guess it's bad luck to name a vessel after something that's had.
It is.
Problems in life.
Not the Titanic.
No, not, we, Titanic wasn't on the list. So anyway, it was, it was actually quite fun, and I kind of maybe played it a little bit, so I waited, because you could put multiple stickers on one, so I, I didn't, some of my first choices didn't have any on them, so I was able to bump some things that I liked, like Waterman, up, because I waited until I put my stickers on last, but anyway. It was a great deal of fun. Housing Kitsap met today, and the county commissioners extended an offer for us to share in their pain on the debt, and I gave that information to the finance committee today, so we're, we're still digesting, I guess would be the term for that.
So you wanted to share the pain with the finance committee?
Yeah, so I want, yeah, it made myself ill, so. I don't have, do you have anything for KRCC or PSRC?
No, I do not.
Don't either. We had a pretty good presentation on housing at, at Plan Paul meeting a week ago. You and I were there with Nick Bond, and Paul Ingram called in and gave a PowerPoint presentation that I think sticks to my mind.
He was basically talking with me about, right now, there are designations of metro cities, metropolitan cities, core cities, large cities, small cities, whatever, in the vision twenty, twenty forty. As PSRC moves into vision twenty fifty, they are looking at changing those designations and making them more regional. There would still be, I believe, a metropolitan city. I don't believe there was a core, but they were taking the large and smalls and making them transit cities. If you had access to high-capacity transit, then you would fall into that category. And right now, the, when they allocate population and employment growth, they do it, you get a certain percentage based on your city's classification. And Port Orchard and Paulsboro are the two small cities in Kitsap, and we share that population allocation. If they move to this transit community designation, then Bainbridge Island, Paulsboro, and Port Orchard would all fall in that classification, and the three cities would be allowed to distribute the population by consensus.
Really?
Okay, the three cities would decide how much population or employment they were willing to take. So it's a change. And PSRC was giving those presentations to the various county organizations to see how, you know, what the reception was, yeah.
So, yeah, that was an interesting presentation. And as, because we have our connection to the ferry and the high, the Washington State Ferry and the high-speed ferry via our foot ferry, Paulsboro to Bainbridge Island, and Bainbridge Island to, obviously, to its ferry, we would all have that same designation. So it seemed like a good idea to us, and those of us in the room, so.
Including Bainbridge?
Mm-hmm.
Well, they don't want growth, do they, on Bainbridge?
Right, they want to.
They do not. They would, yeah, defer to the other two cities. At least, at least the current council feels that way. You know, the wind changes a lot there. So, I will give, Nick Bond's not here tonight, but he has, his code changes at the Planning Commission that you guys got a taste of at the work study, and Planning Commission is working hard on. He has been out on a roadshow. He did the Chamber of Commerce a couple weeks ago. Did Rotary Club today. He's doing a Quanis Club tomorrow, and is the speaker, so it's a pretty good presentation, and Cindy saw it today, and so did Jay. And I was pretty impressed. I've seen it a few times. So, the mayor's report, I've got just a couple of things. The KITA video, John Powers said, hey, you know, don't forget about that KITA video. Let's, and we moved that to the front page a month ago. It's been viewed three hundred and six times already.
Oh, wow.
So it's pretty impressive.
That is, yes.
I think it makes an argument to, to do what he said is, we should consider in next year's budget process, a few thousand dollars to spruce that video, because some of the information's dated. And we've had some other exciting things to celebrate beyond that, like McCormick Village Park and pedestrian pathway, and our connection to the high-speed ferry, I think are all things we should talk about and maybe take a couple of those dated segments out.
That quarter.
And Tremont, so, yeah, exactly. So we're still trying to find an engineer. I spoke to that earlier. And I got something in the mail today. I know Councilmember Ashby already possesses this, and if you attend enough conferences and attend the right courses, you get a certification in municipal leadership. So I, at my last conference, I had to, I couldn't just go to things that I thought were interesting. I had to go to some courses in specific categories to achieve my, my certification.
Right, and if other council members are interested in that, I did most of mine online. They have classes online, and they're very informative.
So, anyway, I just wanted to brag a little bit, and then I give you all a picture. So anything that was white and modern, there was nineteen of them, I think, maybe not that many, fifteen. So we rebranded the new, the newer dump trucks, the newer Public Works trucks, all have new brands, so you should see them around town and sporting our new logo, so. And that's all I have. And how about department heads? Mr. Pleasance, do you have anything to share with us? Words of wisdom?
Took care of a lot of things at Public Works tonight, but if there's any questions, no, I have nothing else right now.
It's just in question time, it's.
Yeah, yeah. If you know any engineers, let me know.
Send your names. Mr. Crocker?
The only thing I wanted to mention back to the councils that, if you recall, a few months ago, I brought forward some information that we were hiring an intern. So we received a grant from WFOWA to hire an intern for the summer. The intern started July first and is doing a great job. Thrilled to have him. So I'm going to try to see if I can convince him to come to a council meeting sometime to introduce himself to you. I don't know if he'll do it, but he's doing a great job so far.
Wonderful. Sharon?
Nothing to share tonight, thank you.
Okay, Brandy?
I just want to mention that I do apologize I wasn't at the last meeting, but it's my understand you guys had a photo taken, and it turned out wonderful. And if you haven't seen it yet, it is on the city's website. And then we've changed a couple other photos. We've been taking some photos of events that's happening downtown, the ferry, to try and get some full photos of people interacting downtown. So as we get those photos, we'll put them on the website for others to enjoy. So other than that, that's all I have.
Just a little shout out to Janine. She really has, does a fabulous job for us. That's probably, oh, ten or fifteen percent of what she did. I mean, she totally manages that website for us. And if you've got pictures or information you want on there, updated information, you reach out to her, because she's really doing a good job with that.
And then we did change a little bit on how we are promoting the foot ferry, if you guys subscribe to the City of Port Orchard's Facebook page. So I believe the post that we posted last week was, how did it start out? It said that if you're nervous about a three-hour tour, how about trying from Seattle to Bremerton, to Bremerton to Port Orchard for fifteen minutes? So hopefully that'll entice some people to take advantage of the ferry this summer.
Years ago, when I was with the VCB and their president, we did a campaign, and we used this little thing about it, that, you know, Kitsap County's just a short walk away from Seattle. Just walk on the boat, and you're there.
That's a great one.
Yep, all right. Anything else?
That's it.
Janine's hiding in the back.
[laughing]
And so we're citizens comments. Jerry, you have anything to share?
Excuse me. With your talking about the streets and the sidewalks tonight, one of the things that on Facebook lately, with the man being killed on Sydney, the city was reprimanded for lack of taking care of the streets and the sidewalks, even though I believe it was outside the city limits. So it's, it's one of the things that the people, even when Chris Henry put in the report about the new courthouse, the city got, you know, that first of all, they should build a high school before they build a new courthouse, and then that the streets and the sidewalk should be taken care of before a courthouse. And so it's something that's out there that maybe just monitoring what people are talking about our city, even though it doesn't actually deal with our city on Facebook, there's a lot out there. People are upset with the, the streets and the sidewalk situation here. Just mentioning it.
Thanks for sharing. All right, with that.